Good evening, the time is now 7:30 and we are now calling. 6:30, I am sorry, I am an hour ahead. 6:30 and we are calling this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Oh my goodness, and Mr. Gay if you would lead us, there is no flags.
No flags, pretend.
Nope, so just pretend.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, talk about perfunctory, okay. Alright, Ms. Gregor-Malls if you would please call the roll.
Um, Ms. Tini?
Here.
Mr. Gay?
Here.
Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Ms. Muniz?
Here.
And Mrs. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Nancy Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders-Comley?
Here.
Mr. James Sanders?
Here.
Ms. um, Jimenez Sims?
Here.
And Ms. Nicole Rodriguez?
Here. Thank you. Alright, we could please take a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. Is there anyone signed up for public participation?
No, there's not.
Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Anyone here who would like to address the board? Last and final time, anyone who would like to address the board? Thank you very much, public participation is now closed. We're now going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, actually tonight it's a little bit different and I've tried to um...
I know.
Oh, thank you. I don't know, I think people probably can hear me regardless.
I don't know if it's on even.
Um, I know this past month and actually since the beginning of the year, we've, we've had discussions around the number of school psychologists that we have not been able to secure to be in our schools and so tonight Mr. Spalding is actually going to take over my superintendent report and talk about redefining the role of the school psychologist for the New Britain students here in New Britain. So that's it, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Spalding.
Thank you, good evening everyone.
Good evening.
So as you know, we're coming to the board today to approve people service specialist positions and to take the place of school psychologists in many of our schools.
You have the, you have the handout right here.
Like, there's no mat, so I don't know.
And while, while he's bringing that up, I think he just means to redefine the role of the school psychologist and get support for them actually, I think.
Yeah. That's the point, Jeff, we love you Jeff.
Okay, here we go.
Told you, we love Jeff.
Okay, so this is redefining and valuing the role of the school psychologist in New Britain. The why. Let's start with the why, the district started the school, this school year with nine vacancies district-wide. Three positions have been filled.
Yeah.
One is still open at the high school. That leaves three remaining school psychologist vacancies at the elementary level. In addition, add the fact that this is a shortage area and students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs are increasing within the district.
We filled three.
What further complicates our situation in New Britain is the unique role and responsibility that our psychologists serve within our district. They serve as a school psychologist, but they also serve as a PPT coordinator. And both of those roles by the way have a, a compliance component to both of them. Currently we have six vacancies at the elementary schools listed here. All of these members, all of these schools are, are served by a school psychologist and they are in a dual role. The state of Connecticut states that school psychologists quote "make a significant contribution to the learning and healthy development of children and adolescents, especially in school districts that fully recognize their value and their services." This really speaks to best practices and clinical focus. School psychologists, what do they actually do? Well, they conduct evaluations, they support students' IP's usually in a clinical capacity as a related service, they teach pro-social behaviors to students, they counsel students, they run lunch groups, social groups, they meet with families and, and other stakeholders, they facilitate peer mediation with students. We just recently had this at TC this week, where we had two students and had altercations. One of the parents were, was, were asking for a, a out-of-district placement and we talked about having the psychologist come in and work with those two kids, you know, make the placement work. Psychologists, psychologists are responsible for evaluations, that's a large part of their role. The chart here indicates the number of initials and reevaluations that occurred in each elementary school last year. The average initial evaluation takes between six to 12 hours or a day to two days to do. That's from, you know, administering the testing, interpreting, writing the report, and then, you know, providing that evaluation to, to the team. Another piece is crisis intervention. If we need the skill of psychologists in that area, and this chart provides specific data as of last year, so you can see we had 47 2-on-1 calls last year at the elementary schools. I think that number is actually kind of low because Lincoln was unable to provide accurate numbers based on the person who was slated to provide that information, they left the district, so we didn't have an accurate number.
Okay.
It's probably much higher, we had 22 911 calls and we had 151 DCF referrals last year. Then we get to the role of a PPT coordinator. So, lastly, as I've mentioned, New Britain's school psychologists are responsible for the role, which is not directly related to their position, that of a PPT coordinator. They're responsible for maintaining, maintaining the records, facilitating those meetings, the compliance piece, and it's a daunting task. In 2005, well actually 2016, the District Management Council Group, which is out of Boston, had done an analysis in Hartford Public Schools and they provided a report two years ago. And one of the things they recommended there was that, in Hartford, the school, the teachers were responsible for providing, doing the PPTs for their own students, so they might have 20 to 25 kids that they were responsible for, and they were responsible for managing the meetings. They found that, that that was not an appropriate use of those services and they recommended that they go to a facilitator for the meetings. Now, take New Britain for example, where you have a school psychologist running these meetings, they aren't responsible for just 20 or 25 kids, they're responsible for the entire building plus at least about 150 PPTs a year depending on the school. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Ortiz, who's a psychologist from Delaireto, and Denise Serrano, who's a social worker at Smalley, to give their perspectives on their current role and the challenges that they are facing right now under our current model here in New Britain. So if you guys want to know.
It's Denise Serrano.
Thank you.
Just for the press. So, uh, thank you for having us here, I think if anything, having a face and a voice is very important.
There we go, he's tall.
Okay. So it's Denise Serrano, this is my 13th year in New Britain District as a school social worker. I currently was transferred over to Smalley Elementary this school year, we do not have a school psychologist, so basically as a social worker it's the trickle effect. So right now, I can do some of the roles of psychologists, PPT coordination and social work. I'm good, but I'm not that good. And when we're talking about PPT coordination, we're talking legal ramifications, we're talking specific needs of our students that require specialized instruction and that is of the utmost importance of who are we putting in those roles. Yes, I'm meeting the gap, I'm meeting the need, but it's very challenging for me to do my job with fidelity and consistency and give my 100% to those students that I have to serve. When we deal with social work, it's not only our IP students, but it's school-wide. It's not only school-wide, it's the parents, it's the siblings, it's even supporting teachers in their time of need. So I am in support of having the role of PPT facilitators because the job warrants a person that has the time and the training to be effective in that role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Ortiz and I'm a school psychologist at Delaireto School, this is my seventh year, and I want to start out by saying that I love New Britain and I love my job and I love my school, but the role is challenging and I think that, being that it was my first job out of grad school, I kind of just assumed this is how it is and I, and I had a really good team to support me in learning that process, but what we're seeing is time and time again, we're hiring very competent school psychologists, but they don't have this background, so there's a huge learning curve and this isn't what they imagine they'd be doing as a school psychologist, so after a few years or even less time, they're looking for other options, I give him, give them that clinical piece. I think in terms of crisis, we will drop whatever we need to drop to make sure that we respond to a child in crisis, where I really feel like I'm not supporting my school, is with teacher consultation. And that's really probably the most overlooked but the most important part of what we do because if I work with a student, I help that one student with one problem in one minute. But if I work with a teacher, I can give them tools and strategies and interventions to use in their classrooms for the ongoing future. So that's why I think we should consider this model because I think that it's consistent with what other districts are doing, where a school psychologist is really focusing on this traditional role as opposed to the PPT coordination. And I also like the aspect of having one person who's specifically trained in this and able to provide consistency with the way that IP's and PPTs are taken care of with the district. Thank you.
Okay, and this speaks to this next slide here. So over the last five years, the Hartford Public Schools lost two school psychologists and we lost 22. And that same group, the DMC group, when they did their analysis, the one area that they gave Hartford commensable was under school psychologists, the way they were implementing that model there, so I just wanted to point that out. So if you take the la, you know, due to the shortage of school psychologists and their difficulty to fill, if you take the last five hires in both categories, there was approximately a $20,000 difference in salary. So I estimate under this proposal, between a, I mean theoretically if you brought everyone at a first step, you could save up to $100,000, I think realistically we're probably looking at maybe a $30,000 to $40,000 saving under this model that we're, that I'm proposing today. Okay, so the proposed plan, we would hire, so we have six vacancies right now at the elementary schools. So, we would hire a social worker to replace the school psychologist at Sunrise and those services would be provided, the evaluations would be provided by the, the school psychologist there, but the social, emotional piece, the clinical piece would be provided by the social worker. And then we would assign each elementary school to two, each psychologist to two elementary schools, which we currently have, with the sole role of supporting students. And then we would utilize five elementary vacancies to hire the PPT facilitators or specialists with the sole role of managing PPTs. There would be no additional hires at this point, so we would be simply filling vacancies. You know, we're in an interesting period here, you know, we had talked about possibly doing this when we had a couple of vacancies, we thought, okay, this is something we can roll out, but because of the large number, we, we really had to take a fresh look at this. And so, you know, when, when life gives you, gives you lemons, you make lemonade, and so this is our, this is our lemonade here. So you can see, if, the first column has the number of sped students currently and we paired up schools to make it as equitable as possible. And then, the second column has, or the third column rather, has the number of PPTs last year, and the third column has the number of evaluations, those could either be initial evaluations or triennials, third year reevaluation. So every three years you have to do a reevaluation of a student with an IP. You don't necessarily have to do a full evaluation with every student, but that gives you an idea as to the number we have. We were not, I was not able to determine how many reevals and initials from those numbers, but starting now, we are going to have the schools take a running total of those on a monthly basis, so next year we'll actually have that data broken down even further. So you can see, they're very similar. The one area where you might note that there is, the numbers are a little less, are the Delaireto-Jefferson total. And part of the reason is, is we had, those are last year's numbers with respect to the evals and the number of PPTs, but Delaireto actually has like a 28% increase in sped students this year, so we expect that number to go up. But that is the pairing that we, that we're, we're looking at, and this is going to be fluid, things are going to change, you know, kids are going to move, so it sort of just depends, we're going to be monitoring this on a monthly basis to see how it goes. The other thing, the way this, this position has been written, it's written also, people can also perform these duties outside the district, so we have kids that are in out-of-district programs, so an individual that doesn't have a lot on their plate might be able to go to a Wheeler Clinic or Raymond Hill and conduct PPTs there as well. So this is a lot more flexible position than previously the district had. So, you know, I'm asking you to approve that these six positions technically. Does anyone have any questions or need any clarification at this time?
I see Roosevelt Village Learning Center K, who serves as the preschool teacher there?
Okay, Donna, do you want to speak to the preschool? Because we left the preschool out here, we do, so preschool is a little different, we have a preschool team at Gaffney and, and we're going to, you can speak to that.
Yeah, so we have a, we have a preschool assessment team in the district that does all of the evaluations. So we have a preschool at Lincoln, RLC, Gaffney and Delaireto, so we wouldn't be having any evaluations conducted with preschoolers once the students are in the program. If we have, if we have a situation, which we do from time to time, where students need intervention for maybe a behavioral intervention plan put in place, an FBA to be done, we do have, we have an assigned school psychologist to Gaffney that is, that is responsible for Gaffney, but we have a PPT coordinator that's going to be taking off of her plate, the PPTs that she's been conducting, so she will have some time to be able to provide some of the necessary intervention services over at, over at, at RLC, which is what you were asking about. And then we have, we do have a PPT coordinator over at RLC that's, that's going to be assigned to doing any PPTs if there were program reviews. And in terms of Lincoln and Delaireto, there is a school psychologist that is assigned to those buildings.
And RLC is part of Smalley because that will be, that is actually part of Smalley, so next year they'll be going back there whenever the school opens again. Sure.
So in general, for each special ed student in one school year, how many PPTs do they have already?
So, alright, so for instance, last year, if you look at the number of PPTs at, let's look at Chamberlain-Smith, there were 358. At Smalley, Vance, 343, Delaireto, Jefferson, last year there were 251. And that goes down, so that tells you how many there were last year.
It just, I mean, I, I taught here for 37 years and it just seemed like the number of PPTs, but each student has gone up from, you know, these to the annual or the triennial.
Right. Well, there could be, you know, there's initials, there's a parent requests one, if you have a student come in from another district, you do an intake PPT, program reviews, it just sort of depends, it's fluid and ever-changing. Just to let you know, those are very reasonable numbers though. So we have an out-of-district specialist right now that's handling all our out-of-district PPTs and she's handling numbers that are very similar to this and she's not in two buildings, she's in, you know, half a dozen buildings from, you know, Manchester down to, up to Litchfield. So, you know, that's a very manageable number, I just want to point that out. And if you look at, and if you look at our middle school right now, our middle school last year had over 300 PPTs and they had a, and they currently have a case load of around 180, 175, that range, and right now you have one psychologist managing that and doing all the PPTs. So this is sort of a phase one, we want to see how this plays out, and then phase two would be addressing this at the middle schools and then also at the schools.
Another question, how does this compare to other districts?
So this is very comparable, so when I, when I just mentioned Hartford for instance, I was in Hartford for many years, and Hartford, you know, if you look at the number of evals, that's an average, 65 to 85 is an average, very doable number for evaluation. That's assuming, you know, again, they're not doing all, psychologists are not doing all of those evals because some of those kids don't need psychological piece on the eval. That's a very manageable number and as far as the number of PPT goes, PPTs go, that's also very manageable. I will tell you, in Hartford, the people in those positions, they not only do, not only several schools, but they also have out-of-district schools and it's quite doable. When you start getting the 400, 500 range, then it becomes an issue, but those numbers are quite manageable. And like I stated, when the District Management Council came in and they looked at numbers very similar to this, they said it was inland with national homes.
So, there's, there are two components, there's having a social worker do the PPT coordination, and then the other piece of it is how many students you have per school psychologist, once you've relieved them of doing the PPTs, but they still have all the other evaluations.
Well, they're going to be able, the psychologist is going to be able to focus on working with kids, so they're going to be doing evaluations and they're going to be handling the crises that we have in our building, so you know, we have those all the time, as you saw the slide, the two on of DCF calls. So those are the areas right now that aren't really being addressed. You know, I'm talking folks in the building and as you just heard, it's very difficult to deal with anything above what we're supposed to just handle the meetings and handle, you know, evaluations, not really seeing kids. So if you really want to deal, if you want to keep kids in school, you want to keep them from being suspended, we want to deal with the, the social, emotional issues, that many of our families are dealing with, our kids are dealing with, this is a problem for us. I mean, ideally it'd be wonderful if you could have a person in every building, but having two schools and for an urban district, that's pretty good.
Can I just also add, I think maybe I misheard you Merrill, the social workers will not be doing the PPT coordination going forward either.
This would be someone totally different.
Right, the PPT facilitator, right.
Whoever applies, because they have to have a special background, if you're a related service provider who for whatever reason doesn't want to do this, they want to break, they're working on their own two, they want some administrative, you know, background, you know, they want to expand their, their knowledge, you know, they want to break from working with kids, that happens sometimes, they get turned out, they want to change for a little while, so it's perfect for those kinds of people. We're looking primarily at specialty teachers, but there may be, you know, there may be social workers, someone else who would like that position. They won't, that's, they're functionally running these meetings.
And I think we were, we were talking earlier today as well, I mean, so this is a group of folks that apply for this, so they, they understand, and I think to, you know, to give kudos to our current school psychologists to say they went to school for a specific reason and, and coming here shouldn't be that this is what they're doing, they, they are committed to their craft and they should be able to work, work in that area. And these five folks too, I mean, they're someone that we can really train well, it's hard to, it's hard to take a school psycho-social worker out of the building to give them updates because they're working in real time with kids, that's not optimal either. These five or six folks will know, this is their role, this is what they do.
I think you're, I think you're in a great success. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for my superintendent report, Mr. Spalding.
It's very important, Ms. Sarah, good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports. Let's start now. Personnel.
Personnel, we did meet, this new position was one of the things we talked about, thank you for that presentation, Mr. Spalding. I think we have items under New Business A through H, which we're bringing forward for, and recommending approval tonight, and some are just revised job descriptions, a couple of our new positions, we can look for questions to get there.
Okay. Thank you. Policy committee.
We basically went over the new policies that are under New Business, talking about just updating our wellness policy to include some guidelines regarding recess and just minor revisions to our parent and family involvement policy and our grants, gifts, and bequests, I should say, bequests policy. We did also look at adopting a new policy around crowdfunding just to give some more guidance about that since that is a big new thing and it's probably a good thing for us to have a policy on it.
Yes. Thank you. Operations.
Um, we did, we met, I think it was the 23rd of October, getting a new truck for snow plowing, where's Mr. Moore?
He's up in the corner.
I love when you can move snow.
Oh, there he is.
I will probably get this wrong about Smith, we closed out that project, correct? And then?
Delaireto roof.
Delaireto roof, we put, we submitted, or we closed it out. Closed it out.
Yes.
We are going to take in some grants for $2,000 from Schaler Automotive for safety initiatives and then another $1,000 for summer enrichment.
Excellent. And curriculum.
Um, we did not meet, but back to policy for one second, did you mention the seal of illiteracy one?
Oh, we had gotten an, we had gotten an update on the seal of illiteracy, that's correct, sorry, I had forgotten that. Thank you.
Alright, okay, and that, that one didn't meet because we had a mid-month meeting, correct?
Well, we're waiting for...
Curriculum, and then the audit.
Right, the, the...
But there was one this month.
...we already reported at the last board meeting, which was just about a WEA session.
Right, right. It's like they are working, just, alright. Board reports. Any activities?
Ladies first.
Ms. Chaney?
I'll report in my, in my day job at the library. Three librarians from New Britain Public Library came and did a presentation to the STEAM teachers at NBU last week.
Nice.
We, Amy Licky and I met with the elementary group and our teen librarian met with the middle schoolers just to share materials that we have, share some of the program that we do. We are contributing every month to the STEAM newsletter that goes out, so hopefully make our space next month, I think, so we'll be showcasing some of our regular, we have Science Saturday every month, that is always well-attended, gets on a waiting list, and a lot of our materials, the books that... And the good thing was that as I was pulling books to bring, I was looking for some specific books and they were, had been checked out, a whole bunch of them, so I think as the kids are being made aware of some of these things and they see things at the library, you know, they're inclined to pick them up and take them home.
Thanks. Anybody?
I just kind of want to get back to the board, we, I did have a chance to meet with Ray Moore regarding the overcrowding in a couple of the schools, I think it was Chamberlain-Homes and Jefferson, and, you know, as somebody with a construction background, I think wasting money on portables is something we should avoid. Each one of those schools has the real, has the real estate to expand and even if it's only small additions, I think that should be the way to go. I also attended the city council's bonding meeting and expressed our disappointment that projects that we've been putting in year after year have not been considered for bonding, and I also expressed that I would like to see a better communication and not pointing fingers at either side, just better communication and the city and the board have had as far as communicating what our needs are for our projects and our buildings and our overcrowding, I also let them know about that. So, I'm hoping that we can, we can increase that and have better communication in putting together our projects and keeping an eye on when the city is putting out for bonding so that we can get included in some of that. So that's, that's pretty much it for me.
And I just have fun stuff to report, Holmes did an awesome like trunk-or-treat right before, I was going to say...
right before, I was going to say Thanksgiving, Halloween. And then our boys' football team, they moved to seven and one on Friday. Senior night this Friday, hopefully you guys will practice dance for them.
No rain.
Please.
Right now they said it's going to hold off, but we'll see. That's about it. Oh, girls volleyball, when I left, they were winning. They lost one game, but they were up by four. Lenny just poked his head in, I couldn't get his attention to-
To see what the number was.
To see what was up. We want to take a short break now.
If we can move the meeting.
I know. We can move the meeting into the gym.
Into the gym, okay.
Any others on there? I attended the Dealaretto Halloween night. I'm sure it had a better name than that. I'm sure it did. But there were over a hundred and fifty families represented there, and I did drive by Smalley and saw that it was jam-packed, and I saw amazing pictures over at Smalley. So it was on the same night. So I saw the cars parked in the, parked in the parking lot, and then when I got home, I was able to look at the pictures, and it looked amazing. So hats off to the schools who are really engaging our students and trying their best to reach out to families. And we also had a trunk or treat at St. James with the North Oak Community, and that was well-attended. There was over a hundred and fifty people there as well. And kudos to the alderpersons and folks that were there. I think we're doing a great job of trying to service different pockets of our communities in general. And it's just nice to see the community members out rallying around kids and their activities. Any others?
Yvonne has her hand up.
Yes, I'm sorry, I can't see you down there.
I visited New Bern High School and met with lovely young lady students in the Young Mothers Program. We talked about the importance of voting and how to vote. They were very quiet, but that's okay. You know, over time, we will continue talking about the process, and I invited them to the DTC Democrat Sound Committee to be part of it and to voice their any concerns, issues. It's part, it's important to be part of the community and, and know more about the political process. So they welcome it, and I hope they will come and visit.
Great.
Just real quick, girls are one and one right now.
Oh, nice. And we also had a very good discussion with Superintendent Sarah, Ms. Simms, Sims, and Jimenez Sims. That is like, I can't, I don't know why, my mouth can't do that. And Mr. Pierce about equity and the courageous conversations that are going to be forthcoming. That was really, I think it was a great conversation to start. But just looking at how we communicate with one another and how we try to embrace the diversity that is New Britain and help our students to advocate for themselves and really have a voice and understanding and being empathetic towards one another and rallying around different things that are important to them, and doing it in a way that is respectful and that can come to a resolution. I think that was a great meeting that we had.
It was a great meeting.
Okay. Old business. I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's contract ex, we, we're just, did we do the contract? Contract extension.
Second.
Discuss.
Second.
Just, okay, discussion? Any?
We're going to keep you as long as we possibly can.
I feel like I should look straight ahead.
I just, it's such a weird way to be sitting. I feel like I can't see everybody. If they're raising their hand, I can't see.
The one-year extension.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Plus ten.
Yes.
Which I think, as I recall, we didn't vote on this last time, just because there were so many people.
Absent, correct.
Good.
So there, I know that we were looking at a contract with language that some people had questions on and stuff, but that's not this.
This is the-
Extension only?
Extension, well, it says extension. It does, a current contract. It doesn't have language about.
Okay.
So, yes, you may. Go ahead, sir.
I would entertain what we can, what we can do, because there, there were some questions. I'm not sure if those have been entirely hammered out.
No.
But what we've done in the past, both with when new superintendents are hired and all of that, is we authorize the president to enter into negotiations, and any final contract would still be approved, but we can take a vote. That basically gives Nicole the authority to go through that and bring a finalized contract, because there were the few concerns that we raised up. But I don't think we had anything finalized yet.
Right. So the motion would then be to give me negotiation authority?
Authority to negotiate on behalf of the board. And any final contract would still have to be approved by the-
By the board.
But it basically just signals what most members had expressed, that we do have the desire to keep Nancy on for the other year, and it's just sort of the-
Ironing up the other pieces.
Final details, ironing up that we were looking at.
Right, so we're not voting on that piece, just the extension.
Correct.
This next motion, is that the motion on the floor or no?
So the, well, he didn't actually motion it, so can you motion it?
I, 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 okay. I would motion to amend, because we don't actually have a full motion really, but I'd motion to amend our current motion to authorize the board president to enter into negotiations with the superintendent regarding a one-year extension of her contract. Final contract subject to approval of the full board.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
That's technically just the amendment.
The amendment, yes. And now, and now we have to vote. So that was the amendment. So that is the, that is actually the, just permission, permission. So now we've given myself permission, that sounds silly, and now to-
Vote on that part.
We can vote to, oh, no, we can vote to just vote.
No, no, what, what, just for point of, point of clarification, we amended the motion-
Right.
-to authorize you. We actually need to take the final vote to authorize you.
Right.
Yeah. As amended, correct.
Yes, yes. So a vote, a vote to get authorized. Yeah, so that was the amended motion, and now the motion, the actual motion is to give me the authorization. So, all those in favor-
Motion, direct to motion.
No, no. Now we've amended it. See, Robert's rules of order, right, yes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. All right. Next. A policy, I'll entertain a motion to approve the policy zero five two three point zero zero, equity and diversity.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Anyone?
I just, speaking about some of those tough conversations that we're having and looking to ever increase our ability to communicate-
Yes.
...with our very diverse background, this sets some very lofty, very lofty, but I think reachable goals. And I think it also puts us in a way that's going to actually hold us accountable and make sure that we're, it's something that we actively work on rather than just say it's in our core values by putting in a policy. We're holding ourselves somewhat accountable to make sure we're taking the steps to deal with some of these tough issues, and I think it's a good step for the board as a whole.
Okay. Point of privilege, I'd just like to read the second paragraph, which is the belief of the board and why we are putting this policy, why we are working on this policy. It says, "The Board of Education believes that the responsibility for student success is broadly shared by district staff, families, our community, and our students' own efforts. Achievement gaps between white students and students of color are unacceptable if we are to meet our mission and vision statements and our moral obligations to our students, their families, and our community as a whole. These gaps are contrary to our belief that all children can learn and succeed." I can't, this is like, progressive lenses, I really can't see anymore. "Adult behaviors must not contribute to achievement gaps or create barriers to success. Adult behaviors must be concentrated on characte, characteristics, elimination of gaps." Okay, maybe I should do this with these lovely lenses. "Elimination of gaps, particularly those that are predicated on a student's race, ethnicity, home language, personal characteristics, or culture, and on assurance of educational equity between students. The board, superintendent, and staff commit to conducting an equity and diversity impact assessment on all future policies that have a significant impact on student learning and resource allocation. This commitment also includes conducting assessments on policies that are periodically reviewed and updated through the policy development process that have a significant impact on learning and resource allocation. The purpose of this policy is to establish a framework for the elimination of bias, particularly racism and cultural bias, as factors affecting student achievement and learning experiences, and to promote learning and work environments that welcome, respect, and value diversity. Further, the purpose is to establish particular actions that the district shall take to address disparities in educational opportunity and achievement." So, okay, all those, any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. I'll entertain a motion, motion to approve policy five, new policy five one four five point five three, transgender and gender nonconforming students and staff.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Indeed, and I love the definition. You want to be appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
You sort of back to it.
Yes. The definitions which she is referring to are gender identity, transgender, gender expression, gender nonconforming, cisgender, gender fluid, gender minority, gender transition, bullying, and harassment. And it breaks it out so that we can really decide where it is and where it falls. And I agree with you, that does help. Any other comments?
I just want to say that this, this is an issue that I feel very strongly about. I have a relative who's gone through the process, my nephew, of transitioning. And I was very active with communities, including LGBTQ and transgender throughout college. I have several friends who identify as transgender, and it's something that we, we tend to ignore in society and in schools. And I was actually really impressed, because this is one of the policies we reached out directly to staff about. And I wasn't sure what we were going to get back, because when you bring up these issues in school environments, it is often a very uncomfortable conversation. People who do not have any personal experience with this often feel out of their depth. There are lots of misconceptions that are out there that are very harmful. But the feedback that we got from staff, the people who did feedback, it was very positive. It showed we have some very thoughtful and articulate staff members who really were thinking about the, this issue with depth. And I think if we can have those tough conversations with our colleagues as educators and as a society, we can move forward with understanding. I think most of the concerns people have, or a lot of the concerns that I hear come from not being familiar with the terms, not being familiar with people. And we're very much talking about human rights. The way transgender is spoken about today is the way that homosexuals were treated, you know, three, four decades ago. The way minorities and people of color were treated, you know, well, yes.
Like today, yesterday.
But we're talking about some of those similar things where we dehumanize segments of our own society and our students. And that's just morally something I can't support as a person or as an educator. So if this policy is one step towards removing those stigmas and accepting people for who they are, what they are, I support it fully.
Now, yes.
As a father of a trans graduate of New Britain High, I strongly support this. I've also been reached, approached by folks from New Britain Pride. John Board couldn't be here today because he's working on a gubernatorial campaign. I think he will come next, at our next meeting, but he wanted to express his support for this policy as well.
Excellent.
I would like to just express, I've expressed this before at several other meetings, and I've expressed it to this board. And I know John Board, and I have a big respect for him, and we're, we're friends. And I too have family members that, you know, are homosexuals that I love dearly. But I have expressed before that on this topic, I cannot, I have to oppose on this. It's my personal conviction, and I just hope that I'm also respected for my personal opinion on this topic. So I cannot vote yes on this.
Okay. Any others?
I just want to state that I think as a society as a whole, we need to embrace everybody's individuality, whether we agree with it or don't agree with it. I think it's, in a sense, it's a little bit of a shame that we have to draft a policy to protect people, but if that's what it takes to do that, then I'm for it. You know, my personal beliefs, I don't think I would bring to the table here for myself only. But I would just say as a whole, what our city needs, and I think what our state and really needs across the country, is this type of support for these people. And any other people that are going through tough times or any types of discrimination as well. So I'm going to support this. And I want to thank Nick, because I know you worked very hard on this, and I think it's well-written.
Any others?
I think it goes hand in hand. It wasn't necessarily on purpose, but the fact that we just approved a policy on equity and diversity, if we're saying that we're committed to equity, then we have to include all people in that equity. And I think that is really, just kind of goes very nicely with it.
I was thinking the same thing. Yes, sir.
I did also just want to add that while this definitely does sort of reaffirm and give protection to those students who are transgender, I think it also gives our teachers a much-needed framework for how to deal with these difficult issues. Because I know in my personal conversations with educators, when I go up to them, I ask them, "What would you do if you had a student who came up to you and came out as trans, and how would you deal with that?" And a lot of teachers treat me with, geez, I don't know, I've never really thought of that. Or, you know. So having a policy that at least gives them some groundwork that can maybe start some productive conversations in the buildings as well, and, you know, get people thinking about this. And we did talk in policy about how there would be a need going forward to-
Training.
...have training and professional development around this, just like we do with other issues with, you know, any of our populations. We have training around all of, all of the other things that we do in the schools. So this is something that we do realize there's going to be a need for discussions and training and things like that. So don't think that that's been forgotten. But also, I really would encourage educators to start to have conversations around this and seek some of the resources that may already exist in your building. There are people, more people than you probably realize, who live with, know of, and are active in this community or have connections to it who can help educate. So please reach out.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. The ayes have it. Policy five one four five point five three is approved. Okay, please check, look at the consent agenda and see if there is anything that you would like to remove.
At what point do we request an add?
I was going to look for, I was looking for attendance myself, I was. So for the next one, I will put a request into Matt to make sure that he secures it from the newest person who is submitting it, right? Attendance, chronic absenteeism.
That is still under development. So as much as you can request it, we're still awaiting that programming, and we've been in contact with the main two plus D five, the main tool to do that.
Okay. So there's, so there is no report to be run at the moment.
There is an available report, and we will submit.
Got you, no? And there you have it. Thank you. All right. Any items to remove? Oh, lovely.
Wow.
Well, she mentioned the other partnerships and the donations already, so that's why she didn't have to remove it. We've tried to become strategic. Okay. I'm actually going to do these three first, so I'll treat her. I'm actually going to do these three first, so I'll treat her. All right. I'll entertain a motion to review items F, G, and H as a cluster in that order, and then go to, back to the top of the order. So we're going to start with F, which is to approve the revised job description of work-based learning liaison. Could I have a motion?
Motion second.
There's a paper in the package, correct?
There is a paper in the packet.
It lists the minor changes, as I recall. Is this the one that, for minor change, you want to come up and highlight the changes?
And I'm going to do all three together, so you just could hang out there for a little bit.
Stand there.
Yeah.
Hello. So for the job description changes for the work-based learning liaison, we compare our existing job description to the capital workforce partners description and merge the two. There are a few items that we added in regards to primary function, but the whole idea is that as we're looking at funders to support and fund positions based on industry, we wanted to have an overarching job description so that it could apply to each academy or career team. The existing one was specific, as Travelers is a huge partner of ours, and they fund the position. We are potentially going to open up to other partners to fund various positions for the categories manufacturing and technology. So we wanted to remove anything associated with the finance and business industry to encompass all industries.
Excellent. Any questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised job description of facilitator of extended school hours programs.
Motion second.
Okay. And can you give us just a brief update about that?
Oh, sure. The position was held by Nancy Puglisi, who has been in the position for 17 years and recently retired. As over time, her job evolved to more elaborate with grant writing, analysis for after-school programs, ensuring that we have funding and supporting our partners for writing grants for the summer learning, for extended day learning. So the updated position change, job description change encompasses some of the items that were not on the original description.
Where's the salary?
And I believe you have a copy of the markups.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to know if you want to include this too, she can speak to that.
Okay, I'll add it up. Okay, any questions? And the funding source for this one is 21st century. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. All right. Motion to, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed pay increases for the Family Resource Center staff. All right, that is in the packet.
I don't think I have that one.
That is in this folder.
It's in your folder.
It's orange.
I can walk through going from left to right on the chart. Currently, our salary for our FRC staff, our part-time, funded through the FRC grant, is $16.50. When you look on some of the websites, the average in Connecticut is $19 per hour. And I shared on the spreadsheet, Swinser and Dan Bear as well, what they pay. So the difference of what we're paying our Family Resource Center part-time staff is, could be anywhere from $1.50 to $3.00. We have had a high turnover in this position, in which this position, we want, or we, the role includes engaging our disengaged families or keeping our families, assisting them in navigating into the schools, which is crucial to the relationship. So the turnover has been, has supposed to be a problem in that department. And we like to show that we are competitive and put some value into that position, in the compensation. If you look, I shared with you, the average annual payout in the grant is $12,540. If we were to increase it to $18 at the low end, it would be $13,680, a variance of $1,140. It's not a large change. It is, but it's substantial to be competitive with our surrounding towns. And it's also, again, funded through the FRC grant. If we were to increase it to 20, depending on the experience, the average annual would be $15,200, which is a $2,600 difference from what is existing. But it's, again, it shows the value in what we want. I do want to add a little component on the bottom. We, the United Way is a partner, they do an analysis of families that are in poverty and families that are, fall in the ALIS range. ALIS stands for asset limited, income constrained, employed, which means the individual or the family, it just barely made the federal law of over, over the average of poverty, but is still unable to make ends meet in regards to sustainable, sustainability. If they are, they are just living, the salaries are allowing them to live check to check, but there's no idea, there's no room for any extras, college funding, education, transportation.
Right.
Anything, anything that is still
Life necessities.
The analysis was done in New Britain and all the towns. And New Britain has two, 62% of our families fall in poverty or in ALIS. So as an employer and through the grant, the federal funding, we're asking that we can lift that up a little bit for our families and who we employ.
So if you're going to move it up, where are you going to take away from, from that grant?
We're going to, so probably supplies. That's the easiest identifying. If we don't have the value in the staff, the supply should be sufficient. And it's a yearly grant, so if this year it supplies, then next year, but the amount of 2,000 is well worth
I know.
Well worth the offset of the supplies.
You got to take it from somewhere to give it to somebody. We have good people, we don't need as many supplies.
You're right.
People will make the purchase.
And the role is to draw
I'm very conservative. I haven't ordered supplies in two years. I make sure that I don't
We have stuffing closets.
We do, that's true. Yes?
Are you looking for us to approve a range of 18 to 20, or are you looking for us to set a specific amount?
I am looking to have that position as a range 18 to 20.
So that you can hire
So that we can make decisions negotiating on identifying their skill, the skill level and what they do.
Is that what it says on here?
And the lowest, and I do have paper, the lowest is 18, the highest can go up to 22. So we just want to provide a range so that everyone can come on.
All right.
So is it a pay increase? Where's the?
So H
Yes.
It's, it's a pay, it's a pay rate increase. It should be a pay scale or something. The word should be in there somewhere.
Because there's, is there somebody in the position?
No. As of last year, there was four in the position, but we currently have one because they've gone to other, their talents and other organizations. So we're down to one person existing at the part-time FRC.
Gotcha.
So we need to hire for four.
So it will be a pay range? Yes. Got it.
Can I just say something on the Family Resource Center? When I first moved to New Britain, I had my young family, and I involved my kids into Jefferson Elementary School. They had the Family Resource Center, and that was so impactful for me as a young mom, trying to figure it all. And, you know, the resources that provided for, for me as a young mom about parenting was amazing. And just having my younger, my toddler being able to just, you know, participate in the programs that they had is an amazing program. And I think it is crucial and essential, especially for New Britain and the families that we have and the support that we need. So I am, I, I think it's a great program.
Can't afford that.
I know.
Quick question for you.
Sure.
So you said this is a yearly grant, right?
Yes.
So when you apply for the grant, would you be able to apply for additional funds next year if you should increase? Now let's just say you find four quality people, so, and you go up, you know, $2,600, that's quite a bit of money. Or is that something that you were able to do?
The grant, yes.
Or is it a separate grant?
And in varieties of other grants within the federal government for SBPT, Title Four, there's other grants that come in that maybe could offset in regards to the supplies because Family Engagement has another grant. So there would be opportunities. If the, it's released from the federal, will apply for, I have to say, I'm not sure if it's competitive or if it's allocated.
It's a state grant.
So I think, I think it depends on the federal allocation.
I would add that, I mean, I know that you guys supply a very quality service, and, you know, when you have employees in a revolving door, it just creates chaos. So you need to, need to be able to afford and pay and maintain a good quality staff. So I'm definitely going to support it.
Yeah, so the simple answer to your question is no, because this is, actually, the Family Resource Center is a state grant. It's one of those grants that has diminished as the state has cut funding on things.
Right.
But these are like, just about our lowest paid staff, given that they're part-timers. I think it's a critical that we increase this.
And they put in more than part-time.
Yeah.
Right. And if you look, the, for, if you're a family, the average or the best, just for sustainability, is $35 an hour if you have a family of four. And if we're inviting our families to come in and engage in the FRC or be employed, we're not
Competitive.
We're adding to the issues.
And this is a place where there are other funders who may be interested in supporting it. And there was a, we added a Family Resource Center with funding from the Community Foundation from the past.
Right. Yes.
So there's local and federal potential to, to offset
Right.
The increase.
It's definitely a need. It's definitely a position where we can ensure that family engagement, we want to keep the staff members, we want to maintain and sustain those programs. And it's needed for a lot of our families navigating the elementary schools or even the up middle and high schools, it's difficult for some families, and that relationship with the FRC staff is very helpful.
I work hand in hand with the family support provider at my school, and, you know, in Hartford, they're, they're full-time. And almost every school has one. And we don't have that luxury, but if we had it, they're invaluable. I mean, the parents, the parents threw a surprise party for the FRC person for his birthday because they just appreciate him that much, you know, with what they could, you know. But it was, it was awesome to see because they're like, you're here for us all the time. So I definitely am in support of M Resource Centers and the work that they do, so it's just good to see.
That would be a great goal, to have 10.
Sure.
Oh, my gosh. It would be amazing.
And to look for additional dollars.
Additional dollars, so that every elementary school
Middle too.
Has a Family Resource Center.
Middle too, yeah.
So that's what we're shooting for.
Okay, so I think this should be fairly easy. All those in, yeah, go ahead. Oh, go.
I was just reminding you of M.
Yes, I got you. I'm going to get, I'm going to grab it. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Okay, and we are going to drop down to M, to, motion to, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase order through the MOU for STEM enrichment for specialized programs. Also, thank you.
And E First is a partner that is providing STEM services to Sunrise and Transition. It provides accessible innovative robotics program at the Transition Center. It's an 18-week STEM program. It's similar to the first Legos at the high school, but it's called the First Lego Junior. So it provides K through six, First Lego STEM activities for the 18 weeks. And then it's the Lego League for the Transition Center from grade seven through 12. At the Sunrise, it's a 35-week STEM for grades K through five, similar activities, encouraging and implementing STEM-like activities for our students.
Mr. Fisher?
Mr. Fisher, I noticed that we had in our board handouts this evening, a modified version, which I assume is the one that we are
Right.
Voting on, which has struck out at this time. Is, can you explain the reason for the change?
Sure. A couple of things. You know, having STEM or STEAM experiences isn't, isn't based on your location. Every student, and that was our commitment, every student will have a STEM or STEAM experience in their time in New Britain. Some of our students who are at Sunrise or TC, their least restrictive environment is that program itself. And having those students integrate into a large setting might not be beneficial for the student. And so always, I mean, our, our goal is always full inclusion, but we also understand the continuum of students and their needs. So we want to bring the programming to the students who are not able to be included in the mainstream.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Yes?
If you have a question, try and formulate it. So this is actually, it's a, it's a, it's for robotics competition, we have to provide the teacher.
Actually, with this partnership, they provide staffing to come in, and it's almost like a train to train a model, so they do provide individuals and staffing from E First.
Oh, I see, it's provide a classroom educator to assist in the curriculum.
Right. It's a partner, community partner. Certified staff is still present with the students. That's, that's a, for, for many of our students, that's the stabilizing force, is having their certified teacher with them, but it's a partnership with the community partner and the certified teacher.
Correct. Team teaching, essentially.
Okay. Any other questions? Clarifications, comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. I'm going to go back to the top of the order. And you're giving an update, no lawyer to look out for, right?
Yep, I have a handout.
Okay. All right. Back to the top. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the new position request for the ELD teacher.
Motion second.
Okay. Mrs. Cassidy, are you here?
She is not.
She's not.
I can speak to it. So this is, again, our ninth and 10th grade, our ninth and 10th graders have an EL designated person on their team. We did need an additional EL teacher at New Britain High School to meet the demands of the students we serve. And so we, we put in, and the funding source is through local. We put in for one teacher there.
Okay, and, yes?
What's the, the reason for, I noticed the description said a Spanish-speaking TESOL certified teacher. Why that rather than a bilingual teacher?
That I can't answer, but I can get the answer for you from Ms. Cassidy. I'm not sure what the why that designation over another, but I can find out. So it was why TESOL and not bilingual? That was a question.
Yes, Spanish-speaking TESOL.
Okay.
Do you see it? Okay. Oh, right there. I got it. Any other questions?
One more. Is the role, kind of goes along with that, but is the role of the person, you know, to teach ELD or to, could you mention the team? That's what made me think of that. Or do they have anything to do with academics?
Meaning, are they pushing in more inclusion versus self-contained EL? Is that what your question is?
Right, somewhat. That's part of it.
I'm looking to Mr. Pierce now, who can maybe speak to it. Mr. Pierce, can you come up to the podium?
Are they teaching content or supporting content?
Okay.
Or just teaching?
ELD.
Like ELD or ESL or whatever.
Say it's an ELD teacher in the position title.
Both.
That's a lot.
The teachers on the team have opportunities to teach those, the basic skills for the recent arrivals, and at the same time provide support in the classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Further discussion, none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion to approve the three sped teachers, two at MBHS, .5 at Chamberlain, and .5 at Key.
Second.
Discussion. I mean, yeah, do we, does anyone need a clear I mean, yeah, do we, does anyone need a clarification for it, or have any questions to ask?
No, these are new, these are new positions.
Actually, I want to speak to this, because it's not accurate. Well, we need the two teachers at New Britain High School, because right now, we're out of compliance with, in the inclusion rooms. We're out of compliance with respect to the teacher's contract. And they're, the rooms are quite large at the moment.
Okay.
And they're not safe. But we did have a discussion about the additional, it's actually, it should have been one teacher over at Chamberlain, and then, point five at Key and Ralke. Would like to do now, if I may, approve the three, please. The two high school teachers, and one for, it would actually be point five at Flex and point five at Ralke, and we'd like to re-address the Chamberlain at a future date. Would that be okay?
I mean, we approve them in positions.
Right, you, you allocate them, we can approve the number, and then you allocate.
Okay.
But, but you're saying you would need one more?
Right, and I don't know, I mean, this is not what we submitted, but...
So you're looking for four total?
We submitted four.
Three point five, that's what he's saying.
So if we can approve four.
Four total.
That's what he's asking for. We need one at Chamberlain, because of, there's a need there, again.
Point five and point five at Ralke.
Because of contractual reasons. And then we need a flex part, we need to be able to have someone work in those are the two buildings to support kids when they're coming in and out of those programs. Right now, kids are coming out of Key, and they're going into, we want a flex room where we have the ability to service kids in the building, at Gaffney, for instance, so they can get that support, and if they're not successful, they're having difficulties, they're in the same school, they can go back into the Key program. When you move them out to, let's say, Smith, back to their home school, there's no support there. So this will address that. So it's really critical.
So I'll entertain a motion to amend the amount requested to four sped teachers to be allocated by the Special Education Department with consultation with Superintendent Sarah. Anyone?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, yes?
I, I'm just a little concerned about this amendment, just because this is, you know, you're talking about positions that are about eighty-five thousand dollars a year.
I know, well, that was gonna be...
And so, this, you know...
So we're looking at IDA for the, for part of this.
Right. And we're out of compliance.
And we did get some of that, the grant did receive some additional money recently.
It's not local funding, though.
I was just gonna say, where does the money come from?
I mean, we can amend the, the motion, but the discussion would be that, when we looked at this at Personnel, we were told that Kevin, you know, turned a little green, but said, yes, there's money for it, but now we're adding another, a whole nother body, and that, I just want, you know, I mean, if we have money, then come forward and say, oh, we have money, so that, I mean, it's, you know...
But I just want to put forward that this is, it was presented as one point O. So, I mean, if you like, we can amend it.
So then, there's three spots, and then they figure out where they go?
Yeah, we can vote on three now, and then you could come back for the, for the other one, absolutely.
Even though you're probably gonna need it before then.
They can post for multiple positions and interview anyway.
There you go.
Right.
Alright, so Superintendent Sarah, for clarification, you're saying that they can post for as many positions as they need, and we will approve as many positions as we can afford?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So to go ahead and post it, and interview, and find qualified candidates, and come back for the fourth position, to...
Well, hopefully with the, with the out of district, with the specially coordinated position, we'll be able to save some money, so there you go.
Did you question?
Yeah, good question. Do we need three or four?
Four. We really need four. We do need four for compliance.
I know you need four, but I'm talking about compliance specifically.
For compliance, for, for kids in a class, for the number, for the teacher's contract, and also, for the kid's safety, frankly.
Okay.
So there's compliance, and then so, safety and well-being.
Right, I mean, if we need five for compliance, then we need to look at five.
We only need four for compliance. Alright, thank you.
I'm not that...
Hopefully.
Any other questions?
This right here? Go on to that down there. Alright.
Thank you.
So for three, okay, so the motion on the table is for three.
We currently have a motion to amend on the table.
We do.
I just have one question. If there are shortage of special education just lately?
Can I address, we do have, we currently have vacancies as well. Those are existing positions. This was to approve new positions, but we do have vacancies. Those are already posted.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Can I withdraw that amendment?
At this point, the, the action would be to vote it down.
So, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
Alright, now, motion, okay, so motion to amend failed. Now, back to the motion on the table.
Motion to approve the three sped teachers.
Do we just have to vote on it?
Just vote.
We just have to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Perfect. Three new positions, and you can get back to the other one.
I'll, I'll, I'll find the money for it.
I could FaceTime Kevin.
We're not FaceTiming Kevin.
Oh, no.
Leave him be. Okay, let's move on. Personnel, approve new positions, one LPN at New Britain High School.
Motion.
Thank you, thank you. Discussion, any?
This is new, new, not a replacement.
This is new, yes.
She is not, Mr. Spalding is.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Spalding, can you speak to the new LPN?
I was about to say, it's pretty well laid out in there, yeah.
It's, it's a student?
There's a student, they currently have a temporary sub in the position.
Right, right.
And the student's probably gonna be here for five years or more.
Maybe we need somebody there.
Right, so this is, again, it's mandated, the student has a, has a need where they'll need, need the LPN.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright. Go ahead, Mrs. Conley. Senator Conley.
I need to read it. I just lost my page. So, she's been in this position for how long, and now it's gonna be a contractual position, correct?
Nope.
Or no?
No.
LPNs do not have a contract?
No, they've had a sub, and they're gonna hire a district employee.
Because of a student that's moved in.
And probably will be the same price, or maybe cheaper than hiring.
The LPN, the student is a student with a need for an LPN.
Oh, 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 got it.
Yes.
Got it, got it, got it.
No problem. Any other questions?
And if the student moves out of district, the LPN goes, they don't have a contract, they're not in with a local contract?
So what happens is...
And if they don't, then, right.
Right, so they fulfill any need there, if there is no, if there is no remaining need, then we...
We no longer need the person.
We no longer need their services.
Right.
So if somebody else, there could be another, who knows? You don't know.
And if there's not, what happens to that person? I'm not saying that we don't need the person, right?
They get laid off.
They get laid off.
Yes.
I'm just saying, we're in a position financially not to...
Position would no longer be needed, if the child of the district.
And there was no one to replace.
Exactly.
Okay. I mean, because if they're a sub, let it be a sub, instead of being a district employee with a contract, with benefits, with all of that.
Go ahead.
It's twelve, fifteen hours a week, they're not...
Yeah, they're not getting benefits.
Right.
I'm good.
Did you have something next?
I was, no, I'm good.
Alright.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Guys have it. Next, the position, approve the new position request, People Services Specialist, out of district liaison. We just had a lovely presentation on this. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alright, all those in favor, oh, sorry, are there any questions? I didn't figure there would be. We have, we have our questions, yes?
I'm just going to assume there was a typo in the estimated cost, that it's not ninety thousand dollars to one million.
To a million.
Yes.
Honestly, I don't think it'll be close to that.
No million?
No. Well, I'll take the job.
Good ninety maybe, without the million.
But just figured I would make sure that was clear.
Indeed.
The zeros count for something.
The zeros count, yeah. Everybody.
He's allowed.
We, yes, indeed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent.
Motion to approve, approve the revised job description as school counselor.
It says school counselor! I'm gonna jump up and down, do backflips.
Second.
Alright, discussion, any? Yes, sir.
Just for my clarification, the underlined is strike through being removed in the whole position.
Correct, so this is the, these are, yes, this is the, this is just keeping us in line with the state's new guidelines that were passed on, went into effect July first.
So it's supposed to be strike throughs not underlined, I thought that was weird. Okay. So it's interesting, we're saying, pretty much, we don't want novice school counselors in this language. Okay, to be clear. Hmm? I know, I'm gonna, I'm just, I have to say that. In looking at the school counselor position, I just wanted to make a couple of notes, as a certified school counselor myself. I noticed that we are looking at both the O-68 and O-67. So the O-67 is the graduate, is the grandfathered guidance counselor license, and the O-68 is the current school counselor license, or what they're issuing now. And we're striking out bachelors, because they don't give bachelors, you cannot obtain a school counselor license be, with a bachelor's degree, it has to be a master's degree. And then the other one, the prior school counselor experience preferred is, is a certain candidate pool that we are looking for. So we are looking for those who have been in the field more than one or two years, if that's, if I'm reading it correctly, yes?
That's accurate, that's accurate, yeah.
Okay.
We're looking for the best and the brightest to join us.
Right.
But it says preferred.
It does say preferred. Trust me, I know what this looks like. It says preferred. And the pay scale is with the, teacher's contract, yes. Good luck with that. Alright, any other?
Can we make a district-wide effort to call them school counselors?
Yes.
And not guidance counselors?
It would be nice. I've been trying. I've been working on it for the last six years.
It's actually a really easy way to push your buttons.
It is a very easy way to push my buttons, by calling them guidance counselor, I get really, it's, yeah, like, one of this, 'cause the job itself is totally different, a lot. What was the other thing? There was another thing in here, I was reading it over the weekend, and I go, huh?
Counselees thing.
Oh, the councilees, yeah, that's, well, it is, it is what it is. Yeah. Hmm, no, I think it's gone. Whatever it was is gone, the other thing that I was looking for. Okay, any other discussion? Nope. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. Oh my god. Here it is right now. We did that. We are in district wellness, yes?
Aye.
District wellness.
Motion to approve changes to policy 6142.101, district wellness.
Motion.
Okay.
I, I know that we often just do, we do two readings on policy. This one really has a very minor change, if the board's willing to waive that and just go forward, because we, we don't have a requirement to hold a policy for two. It's highlighted in yellow, and it essentially just says that the State Department of Education has guidelines for outdoor recess temperatures, and that children can go outside when the temperature is above fifteen degrees Fahrenheit, including wind chill, and below ninety degrees Fahrenheit. Outdoor time should be limited to twenty to thirty minutes when the temperature is between sixteen and thirty-two degrees Fahrenheit, and children need to be properly dressed with coats, hats, mittens, or gloves during periods of extreme weather. As in the past, if there's snow on the ground, children must be wearing proper snow suits, including pants and jackets, to play in the snow. It's basically just outlining common sense, but it's putting that in there as well.
You'd be surprised.
And it helps, it, it helps take the guesswork away from principals who are, you know, worried, 'cause it's kind of like canceling for snowfall.
Yes.
You always have people complain if you cancel, you always have people complain if you don't.
If you don't.
Same thing with outdoor recess. You always have people complain if it's indoor recess, you always have people complain if it's outdoor. At least this gives, gives some guidelines as to, you know, what we should be doing. And we really want to be maximizing the amount of time our kids get outside.
Yeah, outside, I know, but people are so cranky about it all the time.
Do they actually must wear a snowsuit?
If they're playing in the snow.
If they're playing in the snow, like, sitting in the snow.
Oh, just the way that says, there is snow on the ground.
Right.
Well, there's snow on the ground from November to March.
To play in the snow.
Okay.
Stick you up there. Okay, any other comments, questions, or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect. Alright, propose, approve, a motion, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed changes to policy 11110.10, parents and family involvement.
Second.
Good grief.
We're mostly just adding paragraphs here, but if people, I'd like to postpone this to our next meeting, and if people would like to take it out in the community for feedback, that would be lovely.
Okay, so, I do have a question. Did we have anyone from the community at this meeting when we went through it?
No.
Were there any other, okay. Perfect.
So motion to postpone for a second read?
Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion to postpone for a second read.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright. Motion to approve, can I entertain a motion to approve the proposed changes to policy 3280.00, gifts, grants, and requests.
Bequests.
Bequests?
Yes.
Bequests.
That's a mispronounced.
Bequests. Like I bequeath you?
Motion.
Indeed. Discussion. It is very short.
The main change is just updating the gifts and donations that are coming through crowdfunding.
Mm-hmm.
And it goes along with the next policy, which also deals with crowdfunding, but again, I'd be fine, but I'd recommend postponing this, for people to have a chance to read through.
Looking to postpone, second.
Second.
All those in favor of postponing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect.
And I'd also make a motion to postpone policy 3281.00, crowdfunding.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.